Alright, it's Bob Gitter, Board of Selectmen, regular meeting on August 12th, and it is now at 6:33.
Can I have something to add?
My laptop, just to turn it up. Yes.
Park and Rec, Tony from Park and Rec, and Kayla from the office.
Okay.
For the audience of citizens.
Alright, so we'll do like a 3A. And that's, well, concerning the board number, I guess I want something else. Okay, Secretary's Report, I never got it finished, so I apologize, we'll have to table that. Audience of citizens, looks like we have three members of our residents here, in person and one online. So three in person, one online. And would anyone like to address the board at this time? Hi there.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Bob Gitter, 137 Kirkland Street. I just wanted to talk about last week's meeting, it was the joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Selectmen, and I just wanted to mention that regarding the proposed noise ordinance, or a proposed noise ordinance, it seemed like the discussion, there was a lot of misunderstandings about noise ordinances and how they work and how they're enforced and things like that. So I just have a letter to evolve that I hope you read, but I just wanted to clarify through the public that, you know, noise ordinances, you know, still have to be enforced whether we have a town ordinance or a state ordinance, so the police are still responsible for enforcing those noise ordinances. So towns across the state do that now, so you don't necessarily have to have expensive equipment to do that. And noise ordinances by the town also don't necessarily have to have decibel levels. You know, decibel levels is just a scientific way to monitor the noise, but there's other ways to monitor that noise, and Alan from Planning and Zoning made some really good points that the different zones of Deep River, you know, should probably have different noise ordinances based on what's over there, because if you're out in the country or you're in the village, it's completely different. And similarly, the state ordinances, you know, they're based on cities like Stanford, New Haven, Hartford, things like that, we're not that. So I think that it would be a good idea for our town to have our own noise ordinance just because of the different zones that we have and the fact that we're not a Hartford or a Stanford or a New Haven or something like that. And so I just wanted to recommend that you and the Planning and Zoning Commission, or whoever comes up with those ordinances, do a little more research on, you know, how those are put into effect for various towns and how they're enforced. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, next on the agenda then is Park and Rec. And with us, we have Kayla Anderson, our Park and Rec Director on Zoom, and we have Tony as well. So who we'd like to address, Tony, since you're here.
Okay. I heard you, a little preview. All, we decided to request a change in the ordinance, it's number seven under the Park and Rec, uh, excuse me, number five under the Park and Rec ordinance. It firmly reads, "Five members shall constitute a forum." We'd like to change it to four because of our forum difficulties. We only have six to seven members who attend meetings, not even all the same meeting. I mean, I've heard you mention the majority, that really wouldn't work for us because there are ten members clearly currently on the commission, so that would raise it actually to six, so that would work against what we want to do. So that's the request. And, you know, looking at the existing committee size in the ordinances, it says the commission shall have nineteen members, so five is basically twenty-five percent plus one, twenty-six percent. So if we go four with our current number, we're certainly in higher percentage. Even four out of seven is fifty-seven percent, so technically it's a majority. So that's the request.
Are there any other changes in the ordinance you'd like?
Well...
If we have to go to a town meeting.
Yes, I realize that, and if, we're meeting tomorrow, I've confirmed it formally. So I could bring that up, and it'd be okay if we forwarded something, if there are other issues in the language?
Yes, I mean, I think if we're gonna go to a town meeting to discuss it and you do any other changes, maybe it's a good time to address anything else that, because that ordinance, you know, maybe there's some obsolete pieces to it or something like that that you wanna, again, if we're gonna go to that step.
Absolutely.
This is, this is one of our ordinances, it's not the bylaws for...
No.
This supports all of the ordinances.
It's ordinance, the pages, they're ordinance seven and it's number five.
Okay, so that's definitely something to discuss, I know, maybe you both haven't read that ordinance in a while, or, you know, but I actually mentioned to Tony that I had brought this to the, what I was on with the Park and Rec, you know, served in that capacity. It was always a challenge to get, again, because we had some members that would only show up when we had an event that they were interested in, and then they would throw themselves into the, so they were good helpers at, say, the holiday stroll, but then they'd only come some of the fall meetings to give a little stroll, something like that. So the other times of year, you wouldn't see them necessarily. So it definitely is something we can look into.
My only concern, top of mind, just hearing about it now, was that, you know, would that be too few people making decisions? But as you're talking and realizing, you have a forum set by a number, that doesn't block any of the other members from coming to a meeting that's been posted to discuss any issues.
Absolutely.
So, would the number vary?
Oh, absolutely.
Would they come?
Yeah, I'd like to see it changed, so they can have a meeting legally have a forum.
Right.
Because right now, if they don't have a meeting, what good are they doing? Frustrating for them, that's what I'm saying, so if, you know, let's consider, take the percentage wise, they're well above the twenty-five, twenty-six percent, but I just wouldn't want to open ourselves up for another board or commission that we don't have forums for effectively. But in this case, with Park and Rec, I don't, you have to, you have to have meetings.
Right.
You know, a meeting is, it's worked without...
And their composition is a little bit different, because you have a lot of people because you're trying to get the work done. And absent employees if you come anymore, so...
Right, depending on people's interest and availability, that sort of thing.
It's not comfortable with it, kind of, I know that you do understand.
So since you're meeting tomorrow night, oh, honey, Kayla, do you have anything to add?
No, I agree with what you said, I mean, or just so that, you know, we can vote on things during meetings, like, we still meet even if we don't have a forum, but just the voting piece, absolutely.
Right, okay, well, so Tony was saying tomorrow night you have a meeting, maybe you wanna, maybe you could send out an email to all your members to say, please review the ordinance to see if there's any other tweaks that want to be made, and then do you want to come back to the next Board of Selectmen meeting to tell us if there's anything besides the forum number that you would like to change?
Okay, very good. I'm just looking. Sixty-nine?
Sixty-nine is when it was, Park and Rec was established in nineteen sixty-nine.
Okay.
So I don't know if there's been any revisions since then, although the member number was raised by Richard, under Richard Smith's tenure, to nineteen, I don't think it was that high. So that was a change in there, I believe.
Very good. Alright, we'll do that.
Awesome.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, appointment of Sarah Michael, Planning and Zoning Commission, as an alternate member, term to expire twelve twenty, twenty-six, twelve twenty twenty-six. And I know you both had a chance to reach out to Sarah.
A spot person is allowed to, you have to, the law provides that, which means you are exempt from addition.
Great.
I have to, not, I'm going forward to, to me.
Alright, so I have a motion to...
So moved.
One second?
Right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So her appointment will move forward to a town meeting, like we've kind of mentioned there, so that will have to be voted in officially, but we've moved that forward, so she is welcome to attend, but she wouldn't be participating until she's officially, you know. Appointment of Don Caffrey to the position of Assistant Animal Control Officer. So basically, as part of the regional animal control program that we're in with Essex, Deep River, Chester and Westbrook. Town Essex has hired Don Caffrey as the Assistant Animal Control Officer. Each participant in town must appoint her and forward documentation of the appointment to the State of Connecticut Department of Agriculture. So the Board of Selectmen of Chester are already appointed, we did not meet, there was a weird month with the end of July and early August, so this is our first chance to meet, to appoint her, and once she's appointed, she can start working in Deep River, but she cannot work here until she's officially appointed by us, so...
But this won't cost us any more money because it's already in budget, correct?
Yes, she is just filling a vacancy that existed, so it doesn't affect anything with our budget, it's just, again, right now, we have Animal Control Officer Caroline Thunco is the only one that can work in our town right now, just she's appointed.
So make a motion that we appoint Don M. Caffrey to the position of Assistant Animal Control Officer?
Okay.
One second.
Okay. All there.
Aye.
Any opposed? I still like to say that, they're not, the law's there, so yes.
Any discussion?
Any discussion, because we are discussing. Okay, ordinances, so I put this on here because as one of our audience members, that's it, we had a great meeting last week with the Planning and Zoning, a joint meeting, we talked about many different ordinances, noise ordinance, light property maintenance, short-term rental, sidewalk ordinance that we already have, that we're gonna add some things to it. The other three would be brand-new ordinances for us. Transfer station ordinance is also a revision. And then Planning and Zoning, their change to their ordinance was that we need to remove the fees and put in other fees, or put in other language. So I thought we should talk about what we want to move forward, and then what we, whatever we decide to move forward on, I think we're also approving that to go to legal, for legal review, and then if we want to schedule maybe a, kind of a, not a town meeting, but a public kind of forum, just to sort of go over it with public, if anybody wants feedback. So I didn't know what, at this point, we want to move forward. Me, I'm thinking, as Mr. Gitter pointed out, the noise ordinance, I think, I support it, I think it's a good idea, but I do think we have to do a little more research on that because...
Definitely, and one of the pieces of feedback was the stream audit. And I think, Tony took that as a table, I think he was going to personally do the first cut at that.
Yeah. So I think at this point, maybe that one is sort of tabled until we keep searching it, and I agree like that, I like the similar idea, the different decimals because, or decimals because we found, like, the leaf blower would actually be over, you know, somebody's changing, you know, cutting with a chainsaw, that's going to go over, so I think we do have to figure that out a little bit.
I wouldn't say the table, I'd say it's improper, improper, so it's not ready for prime time.
Because there was a lot of group conversation that took place.
Right.
One gentleman talked about the boats coming down the river. You know, those are, if you, those are noise ordinance.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, it's, and what Bob said about the zones, I like it, but what happens if we say, okay, the village is one zone and, say, the junkyard area is another zone, or people in the junkyard area complain about it? So how do we, how do we say, okay, okay for downtown, but now okay for the junkyard? I think that's where it's...
I think we can work on it, get it to be more workable, it is, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it's gonna take, it's gonna take time to work through it, it's not, it's not our finished, it's gonna be done.
Okay. So tabled, but moving forward or progressing?
Tony's already on it.
Okay, so we'll wait for then Tony to maybe present a streamlined one or something like that. So that way we won't move forward at this time. What about light property maintenance?
Well, I thought we did a good amount of work on light property maintenance, it came back to us and how we were gonna operationalize it. So I, I'm not prepared with an answer today on how we're gonna operationalize it, but I think it's something that you'll have to frankly discuss, and come up with an action plan for.
Well, do you think we should, is it worth kind of moving it towards a public forum, if you will, and then we can discuss that, because the impact will be that we have to then come up with money to, like, maybe have somebody on board, on staff, that's gonna be that enforcer? So then we have to approve some money to hire somebody to give you...
I think we could follow two parallel paths on this, as long as we actually have a meeting and do some work, we don't wait to that meeting. As long as we sit there and can really think about it, I think if we just apply ourselves, we could come up with a, a solution, some sort of solution for that.
Okay, well, because personally, I'd like to keep that going forward, but I don't want that to be a stopgap, like, I want, I mean, I want it to be, where it's presented to the public, the public says, oh, this is gonna, a money, it's gonna cost us a little money to actually help this, so we can enforce it, you know, or something, like, make people aware that then we need somebody on board that's gonna be our enforcement person, collect the fees, that sort of thing, you know. So we'll keep that one moving forward, you're just thinking maybe we have...
Moving forward, but we need to do some...
We have a meeting in between. Okay, okay, so that moves forward. What about short-term rental? That one also, we spent a lot of time working on it, I think it was ready to go, I think it...
I think that one was ready to go.
Okay, so that one's a move forward. Sidewalk ordinance?
The sidewalk, I was a little concerned, I presented that night, I think you had said, you know, five feet from the curb line, we don't want to define that, five feet. And what I tried to explain that night is because if you're down there in front of Red House and there's climbers on the road, and you say five feet, if we put five feet path width at all times, instead of saying five feet from the curb line.
So I think we should move it forward, but it needs more work.
It needs cleaning up with the language and more defined, so there's no gray areas.
I think Tony was doing that one also, we have to double check that.
I'm ready to move forward, just, I want to cover our bases.
And we also did say there are, there are some things that could be handled right now with the conversation, and I think that's, that's something we should move on, well, this is a still...
Yeah, okay. Alright, so we'll reach out to Tony and see if he has that with the sidewalk, but we're forward, we're forward. Okay, how about transfer station? Did you all have a chance to review the latest tweaks?
I did not review the latest ones from the last work session.
Okay.
I skimmed through what I have.
I can go ahead and do that by the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so next meeting.
Gitter was heading in the right direction, I was feeling comfortable in the last one.
Okay. Well, and one of these, we were talking about scheduling a town meeting, you know, we went down to finance discussion for, you know, number ten or something, so if we can get these ready to go, we can present those at that same town meeting.
So we're not gonna, it's not scheduled yet? Well, we have to go to board finance first to present it for Tony. Don't usually follow the, I was thinking, because we don't have one.
The payloder?
Yeah, we need it for the whole...
No, 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 so the Board of Finance doesn't meet in August, as you know, but all these...
We can move forward.
We can move forward, Board of Finance, and then we can wait, you know, we can have a meeting after the Board of Finance meets, end of September. Like, schedule the town meeting for early, late September, early October, but when I talked to Ben today, he said, anytime in September was fine with him, because they've already, the last time Board of Finance met, I remember, they approved for the payloder up to three hundred thousand. So it's already sort of, I mean, it's already been approved, not sort of, but it's been approved up to three hundred thousand, so we're good. Alright, so transfer station, we'll keep reviewing that, but hopefully move that in the fall as well. If the timing is right, please, it ought to be around here. And then the Planning and Zoning tweaks to their ordinance, I didn't have a problem with those, I didn't mind. And did I forget anything about this too?
Well, I was just thinking about this while we're talking about ordinances, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about updating the ordinance on Loary, to give it a more heft and make it applicable to current date models, and I'd like to see that move forward, because that's something that's really impacted us. Can we add it to this list?
Well, we already have the Loary ordinance issue now, so we're doing changes to it.
Our discussion was, we were, then, our stakeholder were going to figure out some verbiage to make it more fashionable, and then along with that, we have some signs and on our public works, no sleeping over nudes, no, no whatever, that would nationalize.
I think at this point, that was still a discussion of, Westbrook is just passing one that has a very specific language about public parks and that sort of thing, so we were thinking we could see what else is out there that make ours a little tighter, because ours is very loose.
I'd like it not to drift though, because I do think this is an issue we've been struggling with for pretty much.
Yeah, very much. I'll come in with this forward. Well, I think...
Is Westbrook vote numbers?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Do you have draft from them? Do you have, does John Paul for draft?
Yeah, we want to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna turn it down to John. Well, I don't know, I don't want to promise to be ready for the next meeting, but I'm thinking that, that could happen, because we have ours already, I mean, we already have one on our list, it's just making it...
Cut it up.
Have a little teeth.
Yeah, have a little teeth, so if you could get that from John before that over, it might be just, must have cut and paste and some of, why, why, we end up the wheel, you know? Okay. And if we agree with it at one of the next meetings, then that can be in the fall sometime.
That's great.
Well, very good, and that was a productive meeting on Planning and Zoning, so that was good. And they spent a lot of time doing these ordinance for us, we appreciate that. Region for school, security project update. I was gonna reach out to Dick lately, I forgot he was on vacation this week, so I haven't heard anything lately on the security project. Last I heard was that the elevator structure was not in or something, so I think that that circle for drop-off was gonna, they were gonna change the traffic pattern a little bit when schools started for drop-off, but I haven't seen anything from, I looked on Region for Schools website, didn't see anything. I don't know if Superintendent White had sent something else out to the parents or something, but have you heard anything?
I don't know, we have a mold being, I can ask, see if they have any updates on it.
Yeah, that would be good, because if I, if I got something definitive, I'll put it in the Friday newsletter, but last I heard was they were gonna, they were gonna, obviously a comedy, you know, but it would be a little different drop-off pattern or something like that, so... And I was, but this is the last of the mold, or it's...
No, we're, we're still in a closeout, we're closing books out, we're still balancing everything, but it's moving forward.
That's like the project will never end.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, secure. Vacant land sale update. Okay, so we did sell that property, we had one bid come in, and it was for a hundred and two thousand, so that property was sold, and between both of the properties, we, one sixty-three for the first one, one oh-two for the second, so that brought in one sixty-five, or two sixty-five, and I think we budgeted for two thirty, or two twenty?
Two twenty, two twenty.
Two twenty, so forty, about forty-five thousand off, which was good. And then we also had, so the person that won that property was Nick Olson, Winter Construction, I should say, and he also then reached out separately about the monuments, the cost of the monuments, which was not part of the bid for the sale of the land. So I think we have to move forward, we landed, we sold the land at two, and then in a separate transaction, if we want to address this request for some reimbursement for the survey.
Yes, it's two things, it's, have we decided collectively to, I think we were in favor of moving forward with putting monuments in, can we form a vote on that?
Well, you asked me to look in what the price would be for town engineers, and they came back with about thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Okay, for the monuments?
For survey, to put the monuments in extra. So Nick did, again, his survey gave a very similar price, so I do think it's a fair ask from...
I think it's a fair ask also, I'm very comfortable with moving forward on that, because that's a key thing. It's the other half I'm asking about, Carol, the cost of actually putting in monuments, are we going to move forward and get monuments placed? Nick's asked us one thing, the survey cost, then where...
Did they include monuments on that?
I saw this email that he sent today, the time that can be charged to town because there was no asphalt road monuments was buried in two thousand fifteen dollars, so...
That's the survey cost?
No, that's what the monuments...
Oh, it is?
I believe it's for the monuments, that's how I'm reacting. Because I was not in favor of paying for the survey, because that was part of the, you know, bid that we drawn, but the monuments...
Are they in?
I guess it's, I guess it's the town responsibility to put them in. I don't want to spend any money.
Yeah, right.
But I would like to get this, put the bed.
Yeah, so the town attorney would say this, that would be something off the town. Town should consider putting the, you know, we've been getting the monuments...
Putting them in, I think we should put them in, I'm reading the attachment, it says, "This is from the engineering firm," or "The research, field reconnaissance, field survey at stake of lot," that's the charge, a portion of that, two thousand fifteen, no mention of monuments.
Okay, so the estimate from Jacobson was thirty-eight hundred dollars to do iron rods, so to reestablish required survey control with the rubber rail lines.
And the rail lines.
With the rail lines. There are twelve points to be considered, thirty-eight hundred dollars, so that is the same as the ones submitted by River construction, pretty much, like, it was just thirty-seven there. Then it says, "If you need to add the concrete monuments rather than the iron rods, the additional cost would be twenty-six hundred. Installing the concrete monuments, especially in this area, would be very late or intensive, and cost of the monuments themselves would likely exceed six hundred dollars."
On top of twenty-six hundred, that's not changing those.
For concrete, it's twenty-six hundred and then six hundred, so thirty-two hundred.
It would be twenty-six hundred, I think that includes it, because it says that they have the concrete monuments rather than the iron rods, the additional cost would be twenty-six hundred.
Okay, alright. And I'm reading that one, it's two thousand fifteen.
So you think the one from...
I'm reading this, it is two thousand fifteen, it says English, it's challenging, no, seriously. It's not for monuments.
Yeah, it's just...
It's just for the survey. Survey, it's, we have to put, we have had, the town really had to have done, paid a portion of this if we want to put in the monuments. So what I believe Nick is asking is, will you please reimburse me for the portion of the town needed to do with the monuments, if I'm understanding this correctly?
So you're saying, the time that can be charged to the town because there was not an asphalt road monumentation was...
Yes, there are no monuments here.
Right, but you're saying that two thousand fifteen is what he's asking for, for monuments? Dome engineering?
I believe this email is, Winter Construction asking for reimbursement of his survey cost of two thousand fifteen dollars.
Of the thirty-seven hundred dollars?
That's what I believe this is, and I have not spoken to him, I just...
He wants us to pay two thousand and he pays seventy hundred.
I believe that's it.
Well, I'm not...
If I'm, if I'm reading this correctly.
I'm not sure about, I would be in favor of spending the two thousand dollars to put the monuments in place, if that's what we're talking about.
So I think we probably need to have a conversation.
Yeah.
Whether, just to make sure we understand, this just came into the inquiry?
Yes.
Yes.
So, to make sure we understand this.
Okay, so at this point, we're gonna proceed to close on the... Okay, so at this point, we're going to proceed to close on the property.
Yep.
For a hundred and two thousand dollars, because that's how it was advertised, how it was bid. And then as a town, if we want to consider putting the monuments in, which is what our town attorney thinks would benefit the town, have the road marked with the monuments, then we can address that. And our own engineers gave us the price to do that. And then, right, we kind of circle back to figuring out what dome engineering was doing for Winthrop.
So I think...
So this is a separate issue.
It's a separate issue. But have we made the decision to put the monuments in? Do we need to make a motion and vote on that? Are we ready for that? Or do we have money for that?
Do we have to talk about that more? Because we've got to figure out what...
Yeah, I think we should make a motion that we're going to put them in, but we have to figure out the price. Or do we want to wait and get the...
Well, I think we need to get the price before we make a motion because if it's a lot of money, I mean, we know it's going to be X amount.
Well, it's going to be thirty-eight hundred for the monuments if they're the, the rod.
Thirty-eight hundred if the rod's monumented with iron rods. If we want the concrete ones, then it's thirty-eight plus twenty-six hundred. So it's close to six grand. Right, or seven grand.
Sixty-four hundred. Sixty-four hundred dollars. Uh, that's the cost of the monuments. I don't know if there's any additional, we need to look at this. Is there any additional cost for them to survey it? Or is the survey done because of this work? That's what I don't know.
From our engineer?
Yeah.
It's thirty-eight hundred to do the survey. We want to put the concrete monuments in. It's an additional twenty-six. If you want to do monuments with iron rods, then it's part of the thirty-eight hundred.
Okay.
Maybe I'm missing something here.
Okay.
He, he's al, he's already, he's already had a survey, correct?
Yeah.
And that's what this bill is here.
Yes.
So why would we want to have Jacobs go and resurvey it for another thirty-eight hundred dollars?
Well, they surveyed it before, so they went out and looked at their original opinions and some were still there and that sort of thing. You, the way, the action item that we discussed as a board was, do you want to reach out to Jacobson to see what it'll cost? At that point, we didn't hear from him.
Right.
Winthrop Construction, our town attorney said it might be something that town wants to put monuments in, just so you know where the town road is.
Well, you actually aren't going to say, if, if the survey's been done, then why would we need to have Jacobson resurvey it and have another thirty-eight hundred dollars on top of it and add another twenty-six hundred dollars on top of monuments?
Yeah, no, I'm following. And did people, are the surveys shared or should get filed with the town?
I think what we need to do is ask Jacobson, uh, is this survey sufficient to do it? They might not be surveying that, that last piece that we got. I'm not sure Jacobson knew that a survey was already done at that rate by a third party. Uh, I mean, basically, if this survey surprises, then we just want to put the rods in. And so we get another price.
I go back to the RFP and it was, you know, this is all on your own. The survey is on your own. So I, I would bend and make a happy medium to, if the monuments are our responsibility to put them in, then yes, we should put them in. But the surveying part of it, that was part of his bid.
It was part of his bid. And I'm agreeing with you, if, if that survey is, is what's needed, let's not repeat the survey. So it would seem to me then you would want some compensation to him for that survey if we're using it. And otherwise, we're just going to spend money we don't have to spend. Well, we have to spend it one way or the other.
Well, so Dome, but they put rods in, didn't they?
Stakes, I think. When I draw down there, they go stakes. You saying, Dr.? The stakes, right? The stakes.
Well, we wouldn't put rods, I don't think, he would have put rods in the town's road. That would be...
I think in a ground, we need to sit down with, with Nick and get clarification and maybe clarification from Jacobson and figure this out.
Well, you did break it down a little bit because that's what I asked, if we get this, if we get that.
But, but we don't know if he can use the survey then or not.
Correct. If we call Jeff, what we're from, Jacobson, to say, put the monuments in, is he going to say, I'm not putting them in, but someone else is surveying?
Well, that, I, that's exactly, I don't know if that's a sure thing unless it's filed with the town court, and it's official.
But this is something that I think...
Which it could easily be if we asked him to.
Get taken care of.
All right, so what is it, maybe we need a meeting with Long West Fair, there's a conversation with Nick and with Jacobson.
Well, so we're moving forward with the, so I think there are two things here. We're moving forward with the land sale. So what was proposed in that email is that we reimburse Winthrop for that and he would take it out of the cost of the, before he writes the check for the...
Again, yeah, well, this is two separate things.
So I think at this point, the sale of the property is one oh-two. We have to close that out, you know, transfer title and all that. That's a separate thing. Then we can address the surveying, the monuments, whatever.
And, but they can time-wise have a parallel task, you know?
Yes. But I don't think we should, we can adjust the price or do anything that kind of, which is what was asked.
That was the bid that came in. Transparency, pay the hundred and two, and we'll figure out the rest.
Okay. So I will reach out to, uh, Winthrop to see if he can shed some more light on that. Because that, you know, he might say a lot more, but they just didn't type it out in their invoice or their, you know, presentation here, so a little, little ambiguous. Okay. Plattwood Park concession restroom building, a go-to award contract to Runnymrake Farm. So I think we mentioned at the last meeting, because I think bids were open before then. But basically, the prices all came in. Runnymrake Farm had the lowest bid at three ninety-nine, fifty-nine. And Jacobson did all their pre-bid or post-bid, you know, documentation and everything checked out. You know, submitted it to the state, the state accepted all that backup materials and the, you know, all the checks and balances that Jacobson did. So we do have the notice to award, which the state is requiring us to fill out and send back. So we do have to just vote. I know we, you guys, I've shared all the documents with you and we reviewed them and it all looked fine. So we just have to make an official motion to award to Runnymrake Farm. That would be the Plattwood Park upgrades for the concession stand and restroom, which is a prefab, united concrete building, new septic systems and land sweeping and kind of simplifying it, but basically it'll be a great project. And they'll start that probably, hopefully in the winter, start doing some prep work and...
I did appreciate getting all the documents to review. They've been very thorough, self-contained, long-term. I think Jacobson, whether they die across the teeth, it's uncomfortable making a motion that we made the award of this contract to Runnymrake Farms.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Long West in favor?
I'm going to abstain because people think I'm tied in with Runnymrake Farms, but I'm going to abstain. So I, I approve it, but I, I'm going to abstain from voting.
Okay. Okay, so all in favor then?
Aye.
Okay. Two, two, one. Well, one extension. Well, I appreciate you telling us why you're abstaining.
Oh, I've known him for forty years, so I don't want issues, people were questioning on the last bid that he got, so I'm happy with it.
And you did, uh, one, you know, when Jacobson reached out, he said, he, he gave a very favorable price because he's a Deverver resident and he wanted to give back to the community. So, um, so we do appreciate that. Okay. So I'll go ahead and sign this and meet yourself tomorrow through the state. Did you have a chance to look at the contract?
Hit.
Very good. Okay. Number ten, finance discussion for the payload. So again, at the last part of finance meeting, they approved spending up to three hundred thousand for the new payload. And what we are going to consider doing is to borrow against the general fund. And then when the finance discussion, or the finance auctions get put into place, we pay ourselves back. And that's a very fine way to do it. That way then we can get the payloaders really on its last legs, continue to still leak oil, and they'll keep limping it along and fixing it, and then we put more money into, you know, that situation. So I just wanted to make people aware of that. They will be having a town meeting because we do have to get approval to borrow from the general fund to pay ourselves back. So I think we're going to try to schedule that maybe mid-September. It would be nice if we could get the ordinances at the same time, so we will see when that date's going to happen.
It's just so far away, but it's already middle August, so I don't believe...
So just wanted to help them to be aware of that, that that's what's going to happen with there. Again, we approved up to three hundred thousand. The prices are coming in about two sixty-five right now. Then with the tariffs, they're thinking, give or take, it might be a little over that, like ten, like we have give or take ten thousand, but he's, he's trying to cut that back. All right, Deverver Day. I just wanted to say it's coming up on the twentieth. We are going to have fireworks. We have a great number of people, our companies that have stepped up to be sponsors of that. I don't want to, well, I can, I name a few, but I don't know if that's the whole list, but Haynes, Whalen, GDL, Howard Tree, and am I forgetting anyone, Tim, that was stepping up?
Top notch in GDL, Howard Tree, Whalen, Haynes.
Yep. Adam Carapata, Fire Marshall, has already visited the Haynes site. They volunteered our, their space again, their site. But he said that back wall through the quarry is down about twenty-four feet from last year. So we, we might be running out of time. What we can, we'll, we'll not be able to use that as a shooting location, you know, shoot-off location. So that might be something, I've talked to Kaylee and thought we might be looking into what are our options moving forward in, in future years, you know, but, but she's been, Kaylee was talking to the fireworks staff basically about maybe changing the size of the shelves or something so we can get more height. But it is going to happen and we're asking all local businesses to also participate. We're going to ask the library to stay open, you know, kind of really involve the whole community. And hopefully with enough notice that everybody can arrange staff and staff or schedule something fun for the community. So glad to be here for the twenty. Okay, audiences, citizens. We have a second audience, citizens. Kaylee, you're still on? Do you want to add anything that I forgot?
No, that's okay. I just wanted to listen in on Deverver Day and the Plattwood Park, so thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. If you forgot anything, feel free to add.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. You?
I do.
Yes?
So to me, I'm on drive. A few questions. Any updates on Mount St. John's and/or Deverver Plastic properties? As far as anything happening with those properties, with people moving in there, or sale of Mount St. John's or anything like that? Any updates?
Uh, no updates on, on either of those properties. I have heard that there was a potential tenant for the old West St., uh, West, what's it?
The...
But I have not had any confirmation of any actual leases signed, so I don't want to speak without a term sort of, you know.
And nothing with Mount St. John's either?
No, I will talk to the assessor tomorrow because we did talk about that kind of deadline for when we expected to be paid the back taxes. We had an agreement with them. So I don't know where that stands, so I will reach out to Robin tomorrow to see if she's, she's been contacting, or going back and, you know, can't get more contact with the attorney about that, but at this point, no.
Then the last question regarding the discussion you were just having about this town road land. That is a discussion for the town to pay to mark the tunnel road only, correct? Not the two properties?
That's right.
So that needs to be clarified in that, that correspondence and invoicing that it's to mark the road. And how many town roads are marked with concrete monuments? That seems like a waste to make. The drawings for that road called for steel, I forget the exact wording, on the drawings that Jacobson did, that Jacobson surveyed years ago when the property was developed. Jacobson has all of that stuff. Steel rod is what it says on the drawing. So as long as the town is only paying to mark the roadway, which is what you said, should not be marking the property.
Right, no, good, good distinction. That's what we were, what the town should consider because of the roadway, you know, that's all.
That's it.
Yes. Oh, Mount St. John's. Okay. So I have a few things. I made all those little notes. I do want to say that I found out late this afternoon that the town will be getting a new resident state trooper beginning tomorrow. We have a new temporary resident state trooper coming in, and I do not know any additional information about that.
And you have a name?
I do not have any more information, no.
Well, we have absolutely, we need the individual, captain, do you need...
Absolutely. Exactly. I assume you're going to show up for work tomorrow and then I will say, let's get your meeting. Is that going? Yeah.
Hopefully, you know, we can bury some hatred or whatever you want to say and work with individuals coming in and starts off on the right foot and that we are all open and welcome in town. You know, I don't want the new individual to get poisoned by previous people.
Well, I think we just set our priorities, you know, traffic issues, we want community policing, we want better coverage, better coverage of our, you know, the employees we have with staffing issues. So I'm looking forward to, you know, to have a, you know, great conversation. You know, us three have gone to TrueFest and talked about the needs of the town, and I think continuing that conversation will, whether it ends up here in Deverver, and of course, we'll welcome them because we love our community.
So we want to pick some times for meeting, you know, Thursday afternoons, great, all day Fridays, great. Work the meat in the first week.
I'd say him. I'd say him.
I like to work with, I like to be with him. They tell him.
I mean, that's all.
I will, I was just told they'll be starting tomorrow, so again, I assume it's first thing. Maybe it's an afternoon thing, I don't know. So I will...
Should be revealed.
Yes, yes. Then I wanted to say I met with the traffic folks from UCOM, the T2 School, and we were given these two new radar machines. Again, they're kind of traffic, they're, they're not radar per se, I mean, they're radar machines, but they don't take pictures or anything like that, which is the ones that flash.
Is the flashing signs.
But they have a lot more capability of storage of information. So they want those registered with the state where we put them. And then they, they keep all the data for us, and then once we move them, we have to tell them we've moved them to another location. And again, that collects data, so then at any time we can see what the average speed was, where, where we put it on or something like that.
So what I was thinking on for the first locations, we had all that feedback over the last couple of months, was spring and bridge, both those streets.
Well, to be honest with you, I was going to meet with the resident trooper about that. And DPW had to come up with our strategy. So at this point, we haven't decided where those are going to go. But again, it's wonderful. He said basically every town in Connecticut that wanted them was going to get them or was going to get them no matter what. But I had signed that we, Deverver would like to. So he came down and presented them on Friday.
It's great with the...
Super use. Yeah, so we're really thrilled about that. And I think there was a couple of things the next...
I just had a phone call earlier tonight from Kathy Scholz. She's coming tonight, she's feeling well. She had asked me about the Winthrop Cemetery. That's what we're told, that we're going to use the millings to fix the driveway, and I reassured her that we have not started any of our paving yet. So I just wanted, I meant that I did say something, that's all I would. So I thought I said, Kathy, as soon as we start the milling and paving, I will follow up also then.
Great.
I know that Eric said that they're planning on putting the millings up there, finishing up that way.
Yeah, and I did confirm that with Eric the other day at DPW because we talked about Cedar Swamp. And he's addressing that with some issues with the center line, kind of with some holes, and then one of the washouts on the edge. He was going to get to that, I believe, the end of this week, next week. But Winthrop Cemetery, and I brought that up again, Winthrop Cemetery. And then he said JJ Divley thinks it's going to be towards the end of August they're going to start. And then the millings, you're right, the millings will be available for the road at Winthrop. And then just, now you got me thinking, but the water company that's doing the water mains, they're supposed to be done by the end of this week, I was told. They only have about seven more hookups to do, which I call a lot of those, but I think somebody told me they're just called hookups. But yeah, so that'll be done a little earlier than they thought. But again, the perfect timing for school. That road will not be paved again though for about a year because apparently, once you fill in the trench, they kind of take a little time for it to settle before they come back to compete it. So probably next spring it'll be paved. So I'll have to put up with that.
I have a couple of things. One, you know, go to the River Valley Transit Hall. I'll take you over at the town clerk's office. They have a mobility officer now on staff, Lori McElvee. And she's available. She has, I'll just read this for folks. You can go to her at knowhowtoescct.com. I'll give you this now. She has a phone number. These will be available at the town clerk's office. And it shows, I've got some in Spanish as well. How to access her. She has a beautiful personality and will help chart a course for anybody. She really focuses on the disabled, the elderly, and veterans. So I called Joanna to tell her about this. I don't know, we haven't connected yet, but I have her voicemail because her whole community there would be primed for these services. So this is exciting. It's just a great mission. And she's focusing on pretty two towns and wants to help D River, so that's good. Along the list of follow-ups, I'm just wondering if the Library Roof Moss is going to get on the work schedule for the summer.
I did call the roofing company. I'll follow the roofing company.
Yeah, I don't know if it's too far along at this point. They're pretty thick up there. So at a homeowner, I know you could put applications of their disabilities and things, but it may be too far along.
Yeah, I think the roofers, I don't think DPW is going to be in a position to do that. Just, yeah. Well, one, they're too busy, but that puts people on the roof. And that's not a good, that OSHA thing for, you know, they're not trained to get up on the roof.
The other thing for an update, Carol, I'm wondering about the fire we had in the industrial park that used to transfer. Did we end up getting any settlement costs that the insurance company accepted for this? Water testing and any other things connected? Is underway?
Well, they typically don't have environmental in their policy, I was told. So we're still trying, but we have, Kerna was notified of that, so they're going to try to help us out.
Okay.
I should want something simple that they should have done for being good neighbors. For small price.
I can try that, if I like.
I think that state farm with the good neighbors, but...
No, I'm telling you, you know, just being honest, you know, you want to be good neighbors here. Throw us, you know, right out, whatever type of testing was. Price of your own business.
I couldn't find the results. I know, Rob, there's somebody called and asked me where the results were. So, you know, the testing results.
I thought we put them under parking lot.
Is it under parking lot? Okay, fine, but it doesn't mean they're not there.
I'll look tomorrow. I, we did request them to get by a staff member here, so...
Because I think the fire department had an expense to it, right? The phone number?
I think I want to see it, yeah.
Okay, I will make sure they get put up there.
Thank you.
That was, yeah. The staff has to do that.
That should be submitted to us personally?
Well, I mean, no, just, well, it was a conversation. No, no, I told them about it. I didn't, I don't know the exact amount, but that was Essex, right, Tim? They were kind of paying Essex.
I'm messaging the Essex chief now for a copy of that voice.
Okay, great.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is to go talk to the owner and say, "Hey, you know what? Make a donation to the fire department. Make a donation to the town here for the cost of the testing. Be a good neighbor. Price of your own business."
Going to parking lot and going to the...
That might seem like a visit.
I'll go.
We can go up there, but, you know, maybe litigation with them as well, so...
Yeah, that's, I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I understand, but...
All right, so those...
Set the issues, right? Set the issues.
Set the issues.
That's all on my short list.
And I did want to say again, shout out to Jim, who is doing painting for us. Still an amazing job. We're having Entryway going. And he's also painting the community room. He's painting the tax collector's office and the town clerk's office. And he'll do that little lobby going into the town clerk's office. And he's a professional painter doing volunteer work for us. And we're just paying for the supplies. And so hopefully, everyone watches this, comes in to visit. In a couple of weeks, it'll look like brand new, hopefully, right? I hope it was helpful. Oh, so we do have to work on a policy for the, what we were talking about last night at the library board trustees.
Oh, on use of cameras.
Use of cameras. So I've got one drafted. I'm waiting, Linda said she'd share with the library and come up with. So maybe in our special meeting, you wanted to have a special meeting to talk about some issues to post it out. So we'll do an executive session. We can also discuss then maybe the surveying or not surveying, but the monuments at that time. And we can also look at that policy for electronic surveillance. I guess that's what you call it.
Sounds good. And then progress on the special session. She went on there.
Oh, I didn't follow up with her today. I will do that. I have a lot of things going on with the entry.
I know it's very short notice, but...
She was...
It's a YD.
Right, because you said Susan's...
Will be on, you know...
Okay.
So I don't know about that. 20th, we'll make it 90, yes, that's actually... So it could be next Monday or Tuesday, that'd be ideal.
Okay, I'll do Tuesday. I'll ask her, because I know the only day she said she couldn't do was Thursdays, I think, or something. So, and she did want to speak before that, so maybe... Maybe that's something too, for a meeting that we could have her, like, zoom in and just kind of set the groundwork for what we're expecting from that meeting and that sort of thing, just so she knows.
I think just if you have any forum available, any kind of one, I'll be there. But just stay.
Okay, sounds good. I'm kind of like, there's something missing. That's what I'm like, there's something else I want to talk about, but I can't remember. Okay, yeah, let's make...
Well, for Alan's...
By the time the next time we meet, she'll have already started.
Oh, yeah, so our, yeah, school starts on the 28th, I believe. Do you have anybody in school?
I know, that's it.
Yeah, I think it's the 28th.
My next question is going to be of how we're doing on the benches over there. Do you mind what we need to do?
I reached out to those Zudos and they had no idea. They were going to call me back and interact. Two, I think, two or three of the benches are ours because they match the ones out in front of town hall and around the town. The other two that are plain wood or three, those I don't think are the town's. Nobody on staff here seems to know when they got installed. So I think it predates our, this administration predates some of our DPW folks. They already, they only came. Our resident trooper already, they weren't here yet. So it was hard to, and even the Bezuto person. And then I did reach out to Tri-Town Transit, or you did, somebody.
Yeah, I did.
And they reached out, they said, oh, they're not theirs. So the fact that they're on the ripped pavement or the ripped walkway, or that...
Is it on the town property, is it town property or is it Adams?
I think part of it is Adams, but because our selectmen included that in the streets gateway back in 2015 when that part was done, I think the benches probably got installed at that point. So it might have been an effort between both of them. The manager at the Adams at the time and our, for selectmen at the time.
Do you think we should have them removed?
I think, I think at this time, if we remove them, and that's what I said to her, we only want to know whose they are because we want to remove them, the damaged.
You want to replace them?
I don't think we need to replace them. There's already three there that have the metal end, the legs, and those are in fine shape. It's just the total 100% wood ones that seem to be routed out.
And those are ours?
Those are not ours.
Oh, they're not ours, okay.
But I'm just, I'm just looking at who's they are to be places before someone sits there and whatever, another's came on it. Next thing you know, we're spending legal fees to defend ourselves on something that's not ours.
But if they're not ours, you don't know whose they are.
I don't know.
Again, the parent company of Adams doesn't know anything about them.
So they don't mind if we take them down?
I'll call her again and just say, all right, since I haven't heard from you that you want to claim them, of course, just take them away.
Well, what about this? We'll take them away, or this is the cost to replace them. Who to replace them?
Well, I could, we want all, the ones that are there are over $1,200 each or something.
So they're, so we'll ask them. Good neighbor, we could at least ask if they want to contribute.
Most of them say it's not.
Exactly, exactly. All right, so if they don't want to contribute, then we just, we have the town, we take them out. And then there are still, like I said, two or three benches over there. So I think that's fine if people want to...
I'm going to walk over after we get a better look so I can really get this in my mind's eye. But it would be great to ask them at least if they would like to put a new one up. And if they are not, because we're taking the hazard down.
Okay. This is all supplies in there today, isn't it?
And they went to...
Oh, we have the...
Dorish.
Okay, Adams benches. Yeah, so you'll notice there's a couple that have the metal legs.